Good evening, everybody. Welcome and thank you for being here. I'd like to call to order this workshop of the Borough of Gettysburg. I don't have any opening remarks. I do have one announcement. An executive session of the Borough Council of the Borough of Gettysburg was conducted immediately following the February 12, 2004 council business meeting, consistent with Sections 708A 2 and Section 708A 5 of the Sunshine Act. We don't have any special presentations this evening. It takes us to public comment. This first session is restricted to items appearing on tonight's agenda, which includes code enforcement ticketing, sidewalk ordinance revisions, the 2024 fee resolution amendments as it pertains to towing fees, the bus parking pilot program, and the Stevens Run channel wall ownership. Please use the podium. Please give us your name and address of residence, and please limit yourself to five minutes.
Hi, I'm Shelley Nowes, 28 Chambersburg Street, Fresh Boutique. I would like the council to consider not adopting the bus pilot program for these reasons. The bus parking is not the issue. It's reserved parking for buses that establishments know are coming into town is the issue. The current ordinance unfairly restricts retailers, residents, professional businesses, hair salons, and even residents from reserving spaces. The ordinance does allow theaters, museums, churches, tourist attractions to reserve spaces, thus discriminate against certain types of businesses. The borough also is allowing reserved parking for events such as the Christmas Festival, New Year's Eve, Antique Fair, Pride, and other events in town. I have heard from accountants and other professional businesses that they would like to be able to reserve parking space, for example, during taxis and when they have an elderly client coming in and they don't have actual parking lots for their customers. I have also heard, like, people that live in town and don't have parking, if family comes to town just for dinner for the night, they would like to be able to reserve a parking space just for, you know, three hours for dinner, that they don't have to walk, you know, a couple blocks. And these are just a few of the examples, besides the buses coming to town for a specific time and place. What I would like to suggest is that council instead consider a pilot program that would allow any business or entity or even residents to reserve spaces, and just try this for a trial period of the same amount of time as the bus pilot program and see what the results are. So bus parking is not the issue. I have never really seen buses looking for places to park. I think it's reserved parking that is the issue. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Hi, Michael Wedlock, 38 East Stevens Street in Gettysburg. I'd like to speak briefly about the sidewalk ordinance. Specifically, we have two trees in front of our house that have pitched up the sidewalk, and it will cost us several thousand dollars to replace the sidewalks once the trees are removed, which they need to be because the sidewalk is currently a dangerous condition. As somebody who sits on the college's ADA committee, I find it embarrassing to have an impassable sidewalk in front of my home. And so what I would encourage the council to do is to think about ways in which homeowners could perhaps share the costs of replacing the sidewalks, or the council could take over the cost of replacing the sidewalks. But shade trees have many benefits, which I'm sure have been rehearsed for you by the Shade Tree Commission, who we've worked with for several months. In particular, Mr. Jolly has been extremely helpful. But it's going to end up costing us several thousand dollars to replace the sidewalk, I think, since the trees have a lot of benefits for the community. It would be good if that cost could be shared by people other than the folks who have the trees directly on their property. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any further public comment?
My name is Nancy Goodmister, and I am from the Shriver House Museum at 309 Baltimore Street. I'm here to talk about the bus parking. I've talked to a couple of Borough Council people, and I was told that it was illegal for a private citizen to place or remove meter bags. And in looking over your ordinances, the way it stands right now, it says here that the Borough manager, the staff, can determine if an applicant is qualified to issue a meter -- to be issued a meter bag, and the same shall be issued to the applicant to be used only for qualified purposes. The meter bag issued to qualified applicant may be placed over a parking meter by such applicant. And that's exactly what I've been doing for 28 years. I understand that there are issues, and I don't know how to answer your other situations. But in my particular case, I keep saying I've been doing this for 27 years. I haven't had any complaints from neighbors or anything, but neighbors thank me for the way I do it. And it seems to me that the last time we did this pilot program, that I don't know that there was ever a study done. It was just like, hmm, let's give this a try. And to do that back in September, October, November, was really not a great time of the year to do it because there were very few buses here in town. But, you know, March is a perfect time to do it. I have 35 buses in the month of March, but that doesn't light a candle to April and May, and that's pretty much when the big buses come. So if, like, you maybe step back and actually walk the streets during the month of March and take a look and see where there are issues that need to be addressed, and then, after you do that, then maybe make a decision. And also, I've never heard of any public comment for other people to be able to come and talk about this. This, yes, but, I mean, just an open session for the public to talk about it. There were several occasions back in October. Now, I know I'm never, my street is, it's never hard to find parking like it is in Baltimore or York or Chamber, I mean, yeah, Chamber, like around the square. But there were numerous occasions back in October, when it's real busy, that every parking space, as far as I could see, was taken up, except the three in front of the Shriver House, because it was not an RV, so nobody could park there. That's lost revenue. And across the street in front of the Mercantile Museum, we're sitting there empty, even though there were cars all over the place, because it wasn't an RV park, it was RV parking at the time. So that was more lost revenue in that area, too. And if you decide to do it, I'm really hoping that you'll come up with a third option. I talked to people from the borough, and they said, and that is, like, two-hour parking, three- or four-hour parking. But most importantly, I really would love it if you would give me my meter bags back. I never abused it in 27 years, and I don't plan on abusing it now. And I was told that the borough can't send people back and forth all day long to put those meter bags and take, on and take them off. Well, I did it just fine for 27 years. I never used it to bring in my groceries. It was only for bus parking, and as soon as that bus was gone, off came the meter. So I'd like to save you that inconvenience by help, by being able to do it myself. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment?
Scott English, business owner, Gazeberg Academy, 6668 West High Street. As an owner of over 400 feet of linear, linear feet of sidewalk, I still believe it's the property's owner's responsibility to take care of that sidewalk, period. If the borough would like to replace and make things more ADA accessible, as they have in the past on the corners, they've taken that upon themselves, as they should do maybe with streeties as well. If the street, if the borough wants to plant trees, then they should take care of the sidewalk that they damaged in perpetuity. But as a sidewalk, as a property owner, business owner, when you buy the property, you know the sidewalk's yours to take care of. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any further public comment? Seeing none, we're going to move on. First order of old business today is the code enforcement ticketing proposal. We have Mr. Gabel, Griffune, and Whitmore.
I'll kick it off. Council reviewed this concept a couple meetings ago, and before we actually start the process of drafting a proposed ordinance for council's consideration, staff thinks there's a few points of clarification that we would like direction from the council on. One being what type of infractions should be included in said ordinance, process or procedure for the issuance of code violation tickets. We have a template for that. Fine amounts issued. Is there a progression in fine amounts? If so, how much? And there's an appeals process that we envision for this, and council should weigh in on that as well. In your policy briefing summary, summary, you'll see that we have a beginning list of proposed options for what should be included as tickets could be issued for notices of violation. I don't know that this is a complete list, so Pete, maybe, or John, if you think this is enough, or if there's others that are missing here, this would be a good time to discuss that.
One thing I would add, many of these, like, property maintenance, some jurisdictions specifically identify major infractions that they wanted to combat, so like, high grass is one that's often cited, but not necessarily all violations that are within the property maintenance code.
Andy Tazki?
Just zoning violations, too. I would think it would be important to consider property owners who are doing work without permits. I think that would be important to have an avenue to quickly address those. I think a ticket like this would be appropriate for that. In addition to zoning, sign issues is on there, so those are the two that I think would be helpful to remember. But specifically under zoning, I think work without permits across the board would be a good option for ticketing.
Anything else to add? Okay, so that brings it back into council's purview here. I trust everybody's had a chance to review the document, and I am eager to hear your So the first yellow section here, based on previous discussions, council's directed to move forward. Staff seek direction on the following topics. What type of infractions should be included? They've suggested tall grass and weeds, abandoned vehicles, interior furniture outside, nuisances, which may be need a better definition, property maintenance, which may need a better definition, sidewalk issues, sign issues, snow ice removal, stormwater and drainage issues, trash and sanitation, zoning violations, leaf removal from sidewalks. I mean, I think we're going to put pet waste on there, am I right, fellas? Is there anything else that has been, sort of, you've heard from constituents as to other nuisances that neighbors might need some help achieving compliance with? Anybody?
While you're thinking about that, I want to point your attention to leaf removal. We don't currently enforce that. This is a new concept. All of us are familiar with the condition of our sidewalks in the fall, with the proliferation of leaves that just pile up, and then they become slipping hazards when it rains. So I look at that as a safety issue, and currently, we do not require property owners to remove leaf, leaves, like we do snow and ice. So it's just a thought.
That, actually, I think could even have a broader definition, too, not just leaves, but, you know, any sort of detritus from a tree. I'm thinking specifically of a tree on the corner of Franklin and Chambersburg Street in front of a dentist's office. It's a big, beautiful tree, and I think five separate times throughout the year, this thing dumps like a metric ton of something on the sidewalk. In the spring, it's like, first it's flowers, and then it's seed pods, and then it's some other thing, and then it's just kind of wet, I don't know, and then it's leaves, like, it's all year round, like, that sidewalk has some sort of impediment where it is slippery, if it is any moisture whatsoever. So I think there, that definition could be broader to include any detritus from, you know, a tree, not just leaves. Any other thoughts there? Anything anybody feels is missing from this list?
I agree that about leaf removal, I think it needs to be looked into where it's written, if it's written, if it needs to, in an ordinance, if it needs to be revised. I mean, it's very clear, I think, to residents and property owners about snow removal. I don't think it's clear at all about, about leaf removal, and I don't think it's wise to sweep leaves off into the street, down to the sewer. It's not helping anything. So I, I think that it's good for us to look at what is written, what needs to be revised, spell it out to the letter of the law. Don't assume.
On leaf removal, there's nothing currently written.
So, yeah. So we need to, yeah.
Here, this is where we'd be doing it.
Excuse me, I think that the pet waste removal was excellent, because, trust me, I get home and have to find my shoes and be like, how did you determine whose pet it was? Do you catch them in the act?
Right.
I, I, just the nuts and bolts of that. I mean, trust me.
The ordinance says that if your dog deposits waste on any public property, you have to pick it up immediately, and the word immediately is in the ordinance.
But if I don't, if the person doesn't pick it up immediately?
They get a non-traffic citation.
But how do you know who it was?
It would have to be witnessed.
It'd have to be witnessed, that's, yeah. Okay.
I think that we need to be specific. Nuisance and property maintenance, both seem unspecific to me.
Yeah.
And Chad, to what you're saying about the leaves, we can say that, you know, don't put them in the, they're going to be put in the street. You know, it's going to, like, they're going to do.
Well, they're doing, it's happening already with snow and ice, and you're not supposed to put it in the street, but people do.
Right.
Right. I mean, there are plenty of situations where people don't have a buffer or a planting strip between the sidewalk and the, and the curb line, so, I mean, where do you put the snow if you're between a building and the curb and there's no other place to put it? Do you carry it somewhere? Like, that's an unreasonable ask on somebody. So you pile it along the curb, and some of it spills into the street, but that's, I mean, I think maybe different than just directing your snow blower into traffic, right?
So, yeah, I think just becoming specific and with the leaves as well, because they shed for a while, how do you, how do you know, would it be up to, Pete, would you have to determine that, okay, this is now too much, or, you know, it's just, it's?
Yeah, as code compliance officer, I would make the determination and document pictures, and then I would bring it to whatever enforcement comes progressively, but ultimately, the magistrate would decide if, if, if that was an infraction and what fine should be imposed. But I would make that initial determination and, you know, look at it and say, that's a violation as I determined it through the ordinance, so.
But you would also issue a ticket then as well?
Right.
So, letter D there, nuisance, like, I'm spinning my wheels here. I can't think of what, how we could possibly define that, you know. Unless somebody has a specific guidance to offer there, I would suggest striking that.
Striking nuisance, just to general.
Right, I mean, that, that seems totally subjective.
If you had a dog that was just out of control or something, barking and?
Was it a, yeah, that's my question to staff, if this, what was letter D, nuisance? Was there any type of example?
Yes, all of A, B, C, they're all under the nuisance section of the health and sanitation ordinance. So really, you could put the nuisance above all of those, and then the subsections of that nuisance would be tall grass and trees, abandoned vehicles, furniture, trash and sanitation. Those are all nuisances per the ordinance.
And when you say furniture, you're, you're specific interior furniture, like a sofa that's on somebody's sidewalk?
Right. It says any furniture that's intended to be on the interior of the property, and usually an example would be anything upholstered.
Thank you.
Yeah. And then do we have specific guidance for E, property maintenance? I mean, do we?
Property maintenance was the adoption by the borough, the International Property Maintenance Code actually goes through, and it would almost be, there's certain property maintenance issues like tall grass, abandoned vehicles, so it would almost be like a double, a double standard. But some, some of the property maintenance issues that wouldn't be included as tall grass and some of the things you see would be like, if, if your property has chipping paint, holes in the exterior, those sort of things are under the property maintenance code. And when I do property maintenance inspections, it's usually for regulated rental, but all properties in the borough are, to be following the property maintenance code.
What happens if somebody's doing a no mo na, where they're trying to have, you know, pollinators, you know, bees and other insects and?
The ordinance doesn't account for anything like that. You can't have your grass over eight inches. Anything non-ornamental and flowers and vegetables, anything outside of those, we don't take any time off for the ordinance, or we're not directed to at this point, but absolutely would be willing to take on that if that's something you guys would like.
Because I know that, it seems, I mean, I don't, I don't think it's a large proliferation, but there are people that are becoming more conscious about that and not knowing intemé to try to help, you know, with pollination and all.
I could take maillot.
And the other one is about the, the rain gardens that, that are there, because some of those get really more than eight inches. Are they considered ornamental, or what are they?
Depends. The, the ordinance does specify grass and weeds or anything that's noxious. So I actually identify species on properties before I make a determination. I'd like to decide, you know, whether it's in a garden bed or what, I still, I actually use an app on my phone to take pictures of different plants, and it helps identify it. So I do take that in consideration. And if it's anything outside of a weed, being a rain garden or something, I, I make that determination, and I, and I, common sense, if it looks like something that's ornamental, I'll identify the species. But I don't spend a lot of time, I'm really looking at grasses. That's, that's kind of my perspective. The, the long grass is what I take my time to.
Thanks, Pete.
Can I say one thing to follow up that, because that topic has come up in a lot of municipalities, on what Ms. Lawson just said, and Rusty Ryan has been addressing this, the county conservation district perspective. The, the property that's of note in Gettysburg is the seminary. They have those walking trail with several rain gardens, but they have the high grasses in it, and they have the, the butterflies that comes, and they have like the little viewing booths and stuff there for the butterflies. The way that we've handled it in a lot of municipalities is that we say if, if there's a stormwater facility that has been permitted by the municipality, then it is exempt. And that's one of the things, ways of just, right, right from the very bat, if, if that was a stormwater facility, if it's a rain garden that was permitted by the municipality, in this case, the stormwater authority, then it would be exempt from, from that requirement. So, for instance, the, the seminary would, would qualify because that was a permitted facility.
So I guess I would ask you all to think on this for the next few days. If you have suggestions, please send them to these gentlemen here.
I like Pete's suggestion about D nuisance is really a headliner of A, B, C.
Right, right.
Property maintenance is kind of vague, but I, but I do see what he, what he's talking about. It could even be like, I had an old window that was falling out, and I needed to get it fixed.
We could just reference back to the property maintenance code at the borough.
Because the property maintenance ordinance is very specific as to what those violations would be, so.
Right, right. Okay.
Can I say something?
Of course.
When this list was devised, those devising it were looking at property values for neighborhoods, keeping neighborhood values up. And that really applied to the tall grass and weeds. It wasn't so much a danger as, as the eyesore is what they were focusing on, abandoned vehicles, the interior furniture. There was a time when the college students, because they liked to congregate and visit each other, and what better way than to move their furniture out onto the porch and then into the yard? And that is what prompted that particular item. Then on down to trash, fell under that, also under that, that people wanted trash disposed of in an attractive, the most attractive way for their neighborhood to maintain their value. That, that was the thinking for many of those.
Okay.
Move on to process?
Yes, let's move on to process, but if anybody has some follow-up thoughts for that, please share those directly to these three gentlemen, and they will work this into discussion.
Before I turn it over to Pete, I, I just would like to put out there for everyone's understanding, the, the point here is not to come right out of the box and hammer people. So the, the, the idea would be, per violation type, the first notice would be a warning. Put you on notice, you're out of compliance, please comply, and Pete would, you know, depending on the type of viol, if it's snow and ice, we need that dealt with immediately. If it's grass, you know, a week is probably more reasonable. So Pete, you want to talk to process and see if there's anything that stands out there to you, and then let the council weigh in?
No, I would just tie into that. I, I think it would be important to always be educating first, not even necessarily warnings. If I have an informal conversation, that's always the best route to take for property owners, and that would always be my goal here regardless. The, and just, the warnings would be helpful in the situation where repeat, repeat problems. If I had a property that doesn't shovel on, on this day, they'd get a warning, but the next time, it would move right into that. That was how I envisioned it. But everything else is, a good example, all leading to, that's pretty, pretty much the standard of what I think would, how it would be important. I just don't know, in regards to the, you know, what, what those second and third violations would mean as far as, you know, what's the difference between them as far as cost or fine or whatever it may be.
And, and there's no, there's no, I mean, no requirement to go to three violations. You know, initially, our thought was, you know, the three strikes, you're out kind of rule. But you could end at the second violation, because at that point, you had a warning, ticket one, and then ticket two. Is that enough to then seek remediation from, from a district magistrate? But that's a council decision how you want this process to unfold.
So I have a couple of questions there. With first ticket, you know, the first ticket or warning is issued with a timeline to comply. Written letter is sent to property owner with a CC to the tenant. So that is a question I have, or snow and ice removal. Is it the property owner's responsibility? Is it the tenant's responsibility? Is it a responsibility an owner can pass on to the tenant in the lease? Who do we cite there?
It's, as the ordinance says now in regard to snow, it's, it's all of the above. Whoever's the holder of the property, I think, might be the language, but the owner, it specifies the owner, the tenant, anybody could be getting that citation.
I mean, we have a lot of out-of-town landlords, right? So it's not like they're driving in from wherever to shovel every time it snows, so it seems like they would pass that responsibility on to the tenant, and then hopefully the tenant has been informed of that by the?
And I think that was the intention when they wrote the ordinance, because that's one of the only ordinance I can think of that doesn't direct enforcement to the property owner. It's one of the very few that mention the tenant or holders of the property, to include commercial and residential spaces.
Yeah. And then in terms of, you know, the timeline, I guess it sort of does depend on the infraction, right? Tall grass is one thing, but slush that's going to turn to ice tonight is a different thing. So it, you know, we almost want immediate compliance in some cases, but, you know, the tall grass isn't going to kill anybody. So how would you suggest differentiating timelines for different infractions?
I think, I think that's reasonable. With the snow, you, the, the ordinance, you, it's, depending on where you are, you have to clean your sidewalk that abuts your property within 24 hours after that snow is. If you're closer to the square, there's a 12-hour period that you have to remove the snow. I think outside of those, that timeframe, you're in violation, as far as snow is considered. Grass, you're right. I mean, there, there's not a lot of life, safety issues with grass, but that can encourage vermin and infestations with long grass. It's something to think about. I know it's, it's not going to really hurt us, but that could be something to think about. Ticks and infestations, vermin, they are a little bit better off in long grass, so I think that has to be taken into consideration, too.
So would you suggest having different timelines for different infractions?
Yeah, I think outside of snow and grass, everything could be a different timeline, I'm sorry, snow and grass. Snow is the one that's a, a present tripping hazard, so I think that one would, could be different.
Does anybody have a strong feeling on the number of tickets before it is referred to the magistrate? Three strikes seems pretty generous.
I, I think keep it simple, three strikes, you're out type of thing, which leads me to my next, but we're not at number three yet, but.
So what, what I'm hearing you say is warning? So what, what I'm hearing you say is warning, ticket one, ticket two, after that.
Magistrate.
Magistrate.
That's what I think. It's, it's, it's easy to remember. It's simple.
Yeah.
And like Pete said, if it's an informal conversation, that might not be the, the warning, if he feels like it's gonna.
I want the result.
Right.
That's what I.
A lot of times it's just, a lot of times it's going to be just the education to him, oh, I didn't know, I'm sorry, you know, and don't have to get a warning, they fix it the next day.
Right, right.
And also, the first conversation is more an informative effort, because the people could well not know it was their responsibility. To say the first one is a warning is a bit strong. It's more informative.
Yeah, but I think you'll also see that there are properties that are sort of habitual repeat offenders when it comes to like snow removal. And every time it snows, you're giving them warning number one, I guess? Like, I don't know.
Yeah, this would be, you know, per season, per year. So that, so that, you know, after, after, so like after March, then the 23, 24 winter season is done, as we get into November, December, we'd start over again with a warning.
All right, so we had four pretty decent storms in a row here this, this winter. So, you know, is the first one, the warning, second one's a violation, the third one, they go to the magistrate, the fourth one, they go to the magistrate? Is it, or does it reset? Or does it, you just, after that, it's just citation after citation?
So I would say the process there would be the warning, they didn't comply ticket, the second storm would have been a ticket.
Right.
That would be your first ticket, the third storm would have been your second ticket. And then after that, straight to the magistrate with citation.
Harry, do you have an opinion as to whether that's practicable or not? Or does each snow incident represent a unique legal occurrence of the nuisance?
I think it could be handled the way it's been suggested there. But I, I mean, candidly, I mean, I think that there has to be a little bit of discretion with your code enforcement officer too, in terms of repeat offenders and people who are clearly ignoring their ordinance requirements.
So maybe language suggesting that somebody who has already received the warnings and preliminary citations will not receive that courtesy for the same infraction again, they would just get sent to the magistrate each time?
That could certainly be written in there.
Okay. Any thoughts? Bearing in mind that the goal of all of this is compliance, not citations or trips to the magistrate. All right, do you have enough to work with there?
I think so.
Okay. Fine amounts, number three, first ticket 25, second ticket 50, third ticket 75, citation, value of all unpaid tickets plus $100 filing processing fee. Any issues there?
I think as, as we've discussed, we'd be taking C out.
Correct, right. And the 25 is just a number to get a conversation started.
So the $25 is going to be the, basically come out with the warning letter. They're going to get the warning and the $25.
No.
They're getting the warning and then the second, okay.
There's no value associated with the warning.
Okay, right. First ticket issued is warning and it says first ticket equals $25. I don't think that could be clarified.
So the first ticket essentially is their second offense.
Okay, so I think that needs to be clarified.
Okay.
Because it says first ticket equals 25, and if the first ticket is issued with a warning and a timeline, it implies that it's going to be $25 coming out with that warning. But you said, no, it's the compliance request. Okay. Makes sense.
So I have, I suggest, I have something to propose. I propose getting rid of, I propose getting rid of A, make B the first ticket, including that price, make C the second ticket, including that price. I know that the, the, the goal is not to raise a bunch of money, that shouldn't be the goal. The goal is to educate, that's the warning. But a loosey-goosey fine is just going to mean they're going to repeat offend, repeat offend.
So I'm sorry, what is it you're suggesting?
So I'm suggesting the first ticket is 50, the second ticket is 75, and then the citation, value of all unpaid tickets plus 100.
Anybody have an opinion here?
It's aggressive for a reason. So that we educate with the warning, if you mess up again and we get to give you a ticket, it's gonna, you're gonna, it's gonna cost you. And you won't do it again. That's my suggestion.
I, I like the 25 in that it's more sort of akin to like a parking ticket, you know, like, oh, yeah, I forgot to pay the meter. Well, you know, it's 25 bucks. I don't know that we would jump to, you know, 50 bucks for an infraction like that. Does anybody have a strong opinion one way or the other?
I think 50 would be a lot to start with. I think.
We're gonna still, I just think we're gonna continue to have the same issues of the same people doing.
Well, I think that's what we're talking about with the escalation of citations, is that once somebody has blown through the warning system, they're just getting cited. You know, if, if they are a repeat offender, then it will be a trip to the magistrate each time.
Yeah, I'd just like to suggest again that in part two, if it says first ticket issued is a warning with a timeline, that the fine amounts can't say first ticket equals $25. Like I, I, part A, I would say first, first action is a warning instead of saying first ticket, because first ticket is a warning, that means there's no fine. But then down here, it says there's a fine amount.
So if it were, since we're defining the fine amounts in this section, first ticket is zero, second ticket is 25, third ticket is 50, and then the rest is the same?
Yeah, or you, in part A, 2A, it says first action is a warning with a timeline to comply and clarify that there will be no fine administered with this action.
So we could define the first ticket fine amount as zero?
Yes.
You okay with that, everybody? Good? Good there?
Great.
Appeals process.
So I'd lean on the solicitor on this. The, the idea here is, you know, we, we, we would want a process to appeal if someone feels like they've been aggrieved in some way. Typically, as it relates to, to parking tickets, appeals generally go to the mayor. So I, I think this, this part is very uncertain about how you would like that to operate. To avoid going to citation to a magistrate, do we envision code enforcement appeals laying in, for example, and creating a process for that? Pete, how do other municipalities do this, or John, do you know the answer to that?
I can, I can answer that one. So I did a quick analysis, 10 random, for quality of life ordinances. Code of Appeals Board happens a little bit. Some jurisdictions have a separate appeals reviewer for all ordinances. Other jurisdictions utilize the council, so the appellate would be able to come in and bring their case directly to you. But the one that was most like, mostly used was the, the appeal goes to the court system as opposed to going through any municipal body.
So essentially, you would be sending it, the magistrate would be the appeal?
Yes.
Yeah.
What cost does that to the borough?
None, I would think, if it becomes a court issue.
True. So if they appeal, then it's out of our hands and we don't do anything?
Yeah, the cost of the borough at that point would just be the, which we cover with the $100 processing fee for staff time and then staff to go to court and defend the ticket or tickets, as the case may be.
How many do we see that are, Pete, do we, that reach that point now?
For the snow this, this season, during the snow, I would write about two dozen per snowfall of warnings, and they were all warnings. So there's a lot of properties that have gotten multiple warnings this season and last. But, but that, that, that's, it's very dependent. I would hope it'd be very low. That's my goal.
Sure.
The result.
Of the two dozen, are there multiple, like the same owner, if there was like landlord situation?
Right. Yeah, that does happen. At that point, a lot of the times I'll reach out to the property owner and have a conversation about the ordinance. And, and a lot of the times, they're either haven't set up some sort of responsible party or contract group to come and take care of it. And property ownership changes quite a bit here in the borough, so you have a, a different property owner, different tenants. So I always make sure to, to attempt to, to talk to property owners and find a resolve. That's, that's the end goal for me.
Thank you.
So Pete, before we're starting this ticket process, you said you had a bunch of warnings with the snow. What were the results? Like this season, did people shovel their block soon after you gave them the warning?
Yes. In some cases, yes, in other cases, it melted. That's, that's really what. I mean, it's still a resolve, and, and I think that, that is the, but, but the ones that I, I had to address, especially in the square, I, I make a point during business hours to go in and it's usually oops, you know, and, and they, they go take care of it. I don't really get a lot of people saying, well, oh, well, you know, there, I've had good positive interactions with people when it comes to clearing the snow. I think it's an easy, understandable ordinance and everybody kind of understands why it's important.
What about for grass, like in past, last summer, for example?
I would have to look it up, but, but the number's high. What happens now is, is I, again, using the same ticket system I have, I hang something on the door that they need to take care of the grass and I follow up with a letter to the property owner's mailing address. And I've, I've had ones that prolong, you know, two weeks, three weeks, and then I, I will make contact or send a second notice. But I, I've never had to go to the magistrate at this point for grass. I usually, I've, I've had 100% resolve with, with grass. Sometimes it takes a while, but I think it's, with grass, just, it's, it's a little challenging because we want the grass cut. So if I spend my time sending letters, I'll get two weeks out on a letter. If I initiate the process, process with the magistrate, I no longer give any interactions. I don't, you know, the magistrate's now responsible to make a decision along with 30 days of appeal. So you could have long grass for a long, 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 long time that's not taken care of until the, the court orders or fines them. And then they can decide after 30 days if they don't take care of the problem, the process can start over again.
Right, that's why we're doing this ticket process. So to answer your question, our intern back in 2020 did a study on this between May and June. You can see the numbers of the different types of violations on the screen.
So I have a very specific hypothetical, that's totally not a hypothetical at all. What if you have a property on, I don't know, let's say Chambersburg Street, which has been condemned and has new ownership that is not local and currently has no tenancy either because it's being renovated? How do you enforce snow removal there when there's no local owner and there's also no tenant? And it's condemned?
I, I think the ordinance takes that into consideration and the fact that I, I don't know if we could collect from anyone, but, but the borough is the end goal, they would remove the snow. And that's written into the ordinance. I don't know what process we would have as far as shoveling a sidewalk. Ultimately, if there's no one to, to send a letter to and it's snow, you know, we would just have to get it removed. I don't know. Good answer to that question. If there's no property owner, does the borough, has the borough condemned the property and were?
It had been condemned at one point, yes.
So then we were, we would be responsible. I, I think we would, if we've taken property and. Yeah, if, if the property's in a state of condemnation, property owner has a duty to remediate the issues. If, if they're transferring it to someone else, they have to come in with a plan on how they're actually going to fix the problems. Now, over time, those problems are going to multiply, so that would just be more things that have to be fixed. If you get to a situation where the property's continuing to decline, then that's usually when a municipality will take the property.
Okay, thank you. So does anybody have a strong feeling about how they would like to see the appeals process work? I think there's an argument to be made that there's a certain elegance to letting people appeal it to council. I think that's an interesting concept. It would force us on a regular basis to revisit the ordinance and look at particulars that we might have overlooked, very specific situations. And the fines assessed would be brought to attention through the appeals process and it could cause us to take a closer look at how we, we do administer certain portions of the ordinance. That's kind of an interesting concept. I don't know that creating a whole new oversight issue for the manager is the best solution. I feel like you have a lot to do already. So I think the two options would be either, yeah, you can appeal it to the magistrate or do we want to create a new council function to, or, or we could send them to the code enforcement appeals board.
I was, that's what I was going to suggest, is we have a code enforcement appeals board already, why not have them, they don't assemble all that often, but why not?
However, that is contemplated to be a, it comes under the local agency law. And so it's much more akin to like a zoning hearing, if you will. There has to be a stenographic record kept and so forth. So I don't know if that's where you want to go. I mean, that would be a process that would need to be advertised and done. I mean, it's not, it's not a, it would not be a very practical first hearing sort of violation. I think the reason that it's not.
It's up there on the third, right?
Right.
That's where I was thinking.
Keeping it there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because then that's like a court of your peers, you know, I mean, so.
Right. Although.
We are too.
That, then, or then, by that time, you can also take it to court.
To the magistrate.
To the magistrate.
Right. Again, as our code enforcement officer said, though, the idea is to get compliance and not, you know.
Right, but we're talking about.
Right.
Third strike, we're talking about strike three here.
Matt, are you, are you suggesting that that would be the entire council or a, are we creating another ABC or?
Well, we have the, we have the code enforcement appeals board.
So you're suggesting the entire council, but would that be held during a regular business meeting?
During a regular business meeting?
It would be on the agenda?
I mean, you meet every two weeks. I mean, that would, that would have to happen in a formal business meeting, so. Wouldn't happen in a workshop.
So if you were trying to get compliance, you would have to, you could be waiting a month before.
Right.
Right.
Exactly.
And then we would just be hearing it at a workshop. We can't actually take any legal action at some workshop.
And, you know, candidly, would you, at that point, then, would we be doing it by using like a special meeting process? Then, then, I mean, because council, of course, has sunshine act issues. When it meets, that it has to comply and provide notice to the public. It's not a very practical way of, I think, handling things in a more streamlined method, which is what, of course, what you're trying to, you know, trying to do.
I, I think I would, yeah, probably not encourage that. I would say we should stick with either sending them to the magistrate or come up with a process for the, to use the code enforcement appeals board. One has a cost for us, the other doesn't.
Previously with like the commit, when you had the committee system, I think it was the Public Safety Committee oftentimes would potentially sit as a, but we don't have that now, so. And even they have met monthly, so that probably, that's not as streamlined as what you'd want to see particularly.
All right, well, I would probably advocate leaving it to the magistrate. Does anybody have a way they would like to see it go instead? All right. Well, I would probably advocate leaving it to the magistrate. Does anybody have a way they would like to see it go instead? Anybody? Magistrate?
All right. Thank you very much.
Great.
And I think that's all the open questions?
Yeah.
You guys need anything else, thoughts from us to move on that?
I don't think so. All right. Thank you.
Thank you all. All right.
I'm sorry, there was something about, or maybe February twenty fifth CRG.
Yeah, they're recommending we revisit that today. That takes us to sidewalk ordinance revisions. So Charles and I have talked about this a lot, how we want to approach this here. We have specified that this is one of our legislative priorities for this session. Charles is going to get into this here, but the issue of sidewalks is a thorny one because it involves so many facets of the ordinance. It's not a simple issue of just talking about sidewalks, how they are constructed, what, you know, standards we want to build them to. It touches so many other things. So it's a little bit complicated. So what I asked Charles to come up with today for our, is a, as a very high level discussion, the view from thirty thousand feet. So we can all kind of wrap our heads around why we're going to be talking about this and the sort of tangential ordinances that touch it probably the next year. So take it away, Mr. Galen.
So for the folks who have, just start off with the headline tonight, that several people in the community did receive notices of violation on sidewalk disrepair within the last week or so. Pete Grifio, our code compliance officer, did send those. The point there is a notice that there is a violation. However, the, the council's directed staff to not enforce as, as it relates to financial penalties. But the, the notice of violation still exists. So you're put on notice that there is non-compliance with, with those sidewalks. But don't worry about fines at this point until the council has had a chance to review the sidewalk ordinance in its entirety and holistically based on the bullet points here, because each of these do affect the overall sidewalk ordinance in some manner. Lincoln Square, the center circle, council in twenty seventeen, I believe, passed a resolution as it relates to the, the circle with the, the garden inside the circle, the flagpole, light poles, those types of things. Also, Lincoln Square management as, as a space, it's always been as the community gathering space. So the borough's management of that space, obviously outdoor dining and furniture, outdoor furniture affects sidewalk ordinance clutter. There's a proliferation of A-frame signs and various times throughout a year, we'll get complaints about there's too many of them. They're creating obstacle courses essentially as you're traveling down fairly narrow sidewalks in certain areas of town. Shade trees, obviously that's the big issue. The gentleman spoke tonight on that issue. The importance of shade trees for helping alleviate urban heat islands specifically. Could get into the science on that another day. Stormwater management issues. And of course, how can we help people with limited means afford a very expensive repair? I will just note that Main Street Gettysburg currently has a zero interest loan program. So those that have been put on notice for violation, if they desire to remediate that prior to council's final determination on sidewalk ordinance, Main Street Gettysburg stands ready to assist members of the community with that. You'll just want to contact Jill Sellers to, to get details on that. So that's kind of the thirty thousand foot view. I don't know how, how in depth you want to get into this section here that I, that I wrote regarding this.
Can you do me a favor and put up the Venn diagram real quick? I think it's a really powerful illustration of what we're going to be wrestling with here as we talk about all of these issues. Yeah.
This is a fun little exercise.
So right there in the center, we have the sidewalks that we want to, we want to work on. But all of these other overlapping circles touch on sidewalks. And unfortunately, there's even another one. You could draw and circle around this, the entirety of this and label it the Americans with Disabilities Act.
Yeah.
Which supersedes and supplants every single one of these concerns as it is a federal civil rights law. So I just want to illustrate for everybody that anytime we touch one of these, it will ripple out in ways that we may not fully comprehend or predict. So we do need to proceed with thoughtfulness here and we need to be thorough as we approach this.
Took a while to put this together.
Yeah.
I mean, it, it shows you the complexity of what, what's in front of you. Yeah.
Yeah. All right. So the section he was just referencing here, sidewalk ordinance PBS was originally drafted in twenty sixteen. So it's a long time that we have not been dealing with this issue. At the time, the borough was like today, struggling with maintaining adequately repaired and ADA compliant sidewalks. The initiative stalled due to political pressure, cost, lack of resources to address the issue and the rise of other pressing matters that needed council's attention. The council seated in January twenty twenty four once again made this issue a legislative priority. Exhibit two is an exhibit calling an attention to the need for the council to address the state of the borough's sidewalks. And this is important stuff, right? You know, we, we not only aspire to a walkable municipality, but we also have a responsibility to make sure that when people do decide to walk, that it is a safe place for them to do that. We don't have to try too hard to find sidewalks that could be generously labeled as impassable. I'm sure we could all come, think of one in our minds immediately. Staff is once again considering the state of the borough's sidewalks to prepare policy options for council's consideration. It became obvious that there are multiple ancillary but related issues that ultimately affect how revised amended sidewalk ordinance would look and work. Accordingly, an amended sidewalk ordinance should be viewed holistically and contemporaneously with these other issues, all of the different things we listed there. For the Lincoln Square Center Circle, we have the flagpole maintenance, utilities, fixtures and streetlights, flower beds, refuse cans. Obviously, we don't necessarily want people walking in the center of the circle. In fact, they're not supposed to, but still they do. See people taking a photo opportunity there almost daily. Lincoln Square Management, manage of public spaces, management of public rights of way, fixtures, streetlights, tree planters, refuse cans. All of this stuff is stuff we have to consider. We have, you know, a relationship with our trash haulers. If they're not helping us maintain those street cans, if they're throwing lids in the, in the right of way, we have an issue with them. Outdoor dining and furniture, we, we have to go through for each restaurant that has a permit. We drive pins into the pavement so that they know the actual physical limitations of that furniture. And we are responsible for enforcing that they stay within those, those limitations. Street trees, the street tree wells, if they have a lip to them, are they no longer part of the sidewalk? Are they an impediment? Do we want to invest in metal grates like we've talked about first for tree wells to make them more like a sidewalk surface that can be used to stop the collection of trash and, and dog waste and all that? The ADA compliance is a huge issue. People who have been on council for, before January have heard me go on about this at length. As much as we don't really want to talk about it, much of the borough is not really passable for people who use mobility devices. We have invested a ton of money in curb cuts and truncated domes at the intersections, but then the areas between them has been, you know, sort of largely neglected. Overseeing, and then overshadowing all of this, I think, and this is where we really are going to have to be very cognizant and careful here, is the cost of these materials. Concrete is not cheap. Concrete poured to the specification that the borough would demand is even more expensive. If we follow suggestions of wise people who we should always listen to, we should be considering pins to keep the sidewalks from shifting. If a, if a slab starts to move, but it has rebar connecting it to the slabs around it, you're going to have less of a, a chance for buckles and trip hazards to occur over time. The cost here is certainly the issue. I've had a lot of people over the last month come to me and say, why doesn't the borough just fix all the sidewalks? We don't even understand fully the numbers we're talking about here. I would like to suggest that we procure the services of a professional outside firm to survey and audit our sidewalks and come up with a value for repairs that actually need accomplished in toto, right? It's one thing for us to approach any given property owner and say, you're responsible for this square. And have them go, well, why doesn't the borough just fix it? So I, I think people need to know that we're probably looking at tens of millions of dollars of concrete that needs pouring. But I'm just pulling that number out of the air right now. We don't know what that number actually is. So I would suggest that we need the services of somebody to tell us what in twenty twenty four dollars we're actually looking at here before we start sending out bills to property owners. Any thoughts?
I agree. I think it would be good to have professional data, if nothing else, so that we do have a number and we're not picking numbers out of thin air. Because when I hear, I hear the same thing. And I kind of share the, that opinion of the borough's going to tell property owners what they can and can't put on the sidewalk and then they should be taking care of the sidewalk. But it would be nice to be able to say, but we can't do that without raising taxes. So it would be nice to have a professional audit.
You would have to raise taxes.
Of course we have. So it would have, it would be nice to have that number so that we can say, well, you know, if the, if the borough did decide to do that, this is what it would cost.
Yeah, no, the, the cost sharing model is probably going to be our best bet. And I really love the idea of the zero interest loans. And I'd love to push that as far as we can to help people out. I mean, the fact is, one way or the other, everybody who lives here is paying for these sidewalks, right? Whether we make each individual property owner do it or whether we all do it as a group and share that cost equitably. You've got to find that model here. And there's no easy solution. And no matter what we do, somebody's going to hate it. So.
Well, it's also very difficult because when you look at the, the number of our population versus the number of tourists that hit our streets and pavements and utilize our services. That takes beating with that inflated number of, that we see every year. Thankfully, don't get me wrong, I love it that we're a tourist town, but they don't pay our, our taxes and they don't pay for our sidewalks that they utilize and beat down.
There's also equity issues too. I mean, where the borough is going to do some roadwork and, you know, you get Columbia Gas in there. And as we've said in previous meetings, we try to partner with utilities when we can because it helps the borough, it saves money for us. But then the property owner, you know, realizes that, you know, where their sidewalk is being replaced and they're not having to pay for that. We saw that with Broadway, East and West Broadway, when work was done there. And so that becomes a real equity issue. And, you know, who, who has to pay and who, who doesn't pay? The other thing I was thinking about too is the liability too. When it's, when we put the burden on the property owner and then somebody falls on the, you know, on the sidewalk and breaks an arm or something, then it's the property owner that could get sued. So if we start to do repairs or split repairs, then are we liable then? You know, so those are things that I'm kind of thinking about.
The law's pretty clear in terms of liability. That's where the property owner is primarily liable for the maintenance of their sidewalks. If somebody gets injured, it's the property owner who is primarily liable. The borough is secondarily liable because we have the ability to enforce our ordinances to keep those sidewalks safe for the pedestrians, for the traveling public, if you will. But the law's pretty clear, no matter what we do, that the property owner has the initial liability.
Yep. You have an idea of how long it would take to survey or what the cost would be?
I bet Mr. Claylaw has a thought or two on that.
I think the answer to that question is a function of other borough priorities, right? So I think if, if, if that comes the highest priority, you could probably get it turned around in a few months. Knowing that that's not realistic, it'll probably end up being closer to six to nine months to complete it just because there's a lot of other things on all of the engineers' tables. If I had to guess at a price range, we've done sidewalk surveys from anywhere from ten to thirty thousand dollars. So it really depends on how, the level of detail that you want with that survey. If it's a really high level and you're just looking at per block and trying to get a swag at it, then you can be in that ten thousand dollar. But if you really want to have a detail per property and, and different categories of, of square footage prices, then you could be looking at thirty thousand. So that's just to give you an idea, less than a year to do, to do analysis. And ten to thirty thousand, I know it's a big, big range, but just to get you in a, in a ballpark.
In twenty fourteen, council did engage a professional, Precision Cut was a company that they specialize in essentially shaving the heaved portions of a slab so that it's a little more seamless to, to go over them. It's a temporary fix. It's not ideal, but it makes it simpler for a person with disabilities to, to travel down the sidewalk. And there's been a heat map produced out of that twenty fourteen survey. I don't even want to look at the numbers because clearly they're going to be low at this point. But I remember back in twenty fourteen, it was thousands and thousands of dollars per parcel that was identified. You can see the map here wherever you see a, a red balloon. That's a sidewalk that is in some sort of disrepair that needs attention. And they're all over the borough.
Perhaps we could make a selection of roads to sort of audit and then sort of apply some sort of statistical model to extrapolate what kind of costs we're talking about? Do you think that could be achieved in a more compact amount of time?
Certainly. Certainly, yeah. Yeah. If you can focus your attention on some priority areas, that would definitely cut down the time and expense. And, and I think there are, you know, whenever you talk about extrapolating and turning it into a model, some of the other things I think when you're, you're talking about those lists of things that, that we had to consider with sidewalks, I think of the width of the sidewalk, whether or not there's a grass strip. Is the width five feet or is it four feet? You know, Cool Park, most of those are, are, are only four feet, but there's also a three foot grass strip. So a lot of those kinds of things. But you could look at a couple of streets in Cool Park and then apply that to all of the streets in Cool Park because they're generally the same, you know. And, and then you could do the same thing, you know, up around the seminary area. Those sidewalks are generally the same. So you could take a look at those and then you could apply that to a, to a greater area there. So there are ways to do that copy paste type of a thing, save some time and money.
Perhaps a small area, I guess what you're saying, Chad, is perhaps a small area from each of our zoning, each of our zones? So that we have an idea?
Maybe zones might be a way of looking at it. I'm thinking more in like, like sidewalks. Sidewalks that are, that are like all of the neighboring sidewalks. If they're all without crash strips and they're all the same thing, they all might be six to eight feet wide, those kinds of things, then all of those would have the same number associated with them.
I mean, it's not going to give us an exact, exact, but it may be a quicker way to get some type of data.
Right.
Yeah. Because right now, yeah, it's, it's hard to guess. You're definitely talking in tens of millions.
I mean, I can just keep making up numbers.
It's definitely.
It's a hundred bajillion dollars, people.
So much.
So much. Okay. I think we scratched it that enough. Let's move on. Let's talk about our fee resolution and towing. I believe Mrs. Butterfield has some research she would like to share with us.
No, Mrs. Butterfield emailed everybody that research, but I don't.
All right.
We saw it.
Yeah, we all saw it.
It's on the screen.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
On the screen. On the screen. So I would like to, if we can, put this to bed tonight, come up with hard numbers and have something to vote on in March. And I don't think we need to agonize over it too much. The numbers we need to settle on, Charles, can you remind us, please? It's only three or four that we need to finalize, right?
Uh, yeah. The fee for non-crashes, for example, like if someone is still parked on a parade route and didn't pay attention to the no parking bag on the meter, that's one consideration. There is a consideration for disabled vehicle from an accident that generally has a different fee structure to it. Some municipalities do, you know, a show-up fee, and then any additional hours beyond one are billed at a different rate, so that's a consideration. Then what we don't have is a drop fee. So let's say that person is parked in the parade route, tow truck shows up, and suddenly the owner of the vehicle shows up and says, oh, I'm going to drive away now. Right now, we have no way of paying the tow service for the inconvenience of showing up to not make any of their money back for their mobilization. So essentially, those are the three topics for your consideration.
Mrs. Butterfield, in your research, did any of these municipalities utilize a drop fee?
Um, no.
All right. So the chief has suggested, I believe, $100, is that correct?
Yeah.
What do you all think?
I'd say something less than that. $50 drop fee? I mean, what are we talking about exactly with a drop fee? How much is that? I mean, what is involved in that?
Yeah, I mean, we're talking about...
Inconvenience.
A half an hour of somebody's time.
Paying for inconvenience, right.
Yeah, you're paying someone's time and fuel to show up on scene to not haul a car, ultimately.
Something nominal. Gotcha.
Yeah. I'd say $50 feels fair. Anybody else? $150?
About $150 for a drop fee?
Okay.
Someone asked why the state college figures were so out of line, being higher. I'm sure, I don't know, I didn't ask that specific question, but I'm sure the student population is what drives that. Even though we have a student population here, it is not the overwhelming number that it is at state college.
So the non-crash number?
Looks like 110?
Do we know the current fee for non-crash?
Was it 175?
Yeah, I don't have a shoe resolution up in front of me at the moment.
Was it 125?
That sounds about right.
125. The chief wanted to bring it up to 200.
Right.
Right. So I think it's 125. Is that right?
That sounds right. And the impetus to this was, chief was suggesting that we're running out of tow companies that would do business based on the low assessments that they would make.
Why does it always be dropped out?
What's the current fee? And what was wanted?
Without looking at it, it's about 125.
It is.
They wanted to raise it double.
Mrs. Butterfield, do you know when these were adopted?
A long time. They used to be in the fees for... Oh, on the other sit... I don't know when they were adopted, in the other towns.
They vary. I mean, we look at Pittsburgh, and you can see places like York. I mean, we can't compare ourselves necessarily to Pittsburgh, but what is 110 for the non-crash? And we're already at 125. And I know they have more tow truck companies in Pittsburgh, for sure. So there's competition, but I still can't see the reasonableness of doubling it. I still think that's arbitrary.
Well, I also, I agree with you on that, Belisha. And I also wonder why, I wonder if we can look at the ordinance that's for tow trucks that, and expand upon that mile radius to allow more companies to...
They have to have it in pound within a certain, they have to have it in pound lot within a certain mileage distance from Gettysburg. So that's the challenge there.
So in 20 miles, I'm in Hanover.
Hanover's too far, based on what we currently have in the ordinance.
That's what I'm suggesting, is that we look at the change of the ordinance so that we are allowing, because if we're having tow companies that are saying, we're not doing it, well, they're not the only tow company.
So here's the hypothetical, right? You park your car, you don't realize there's going to be a parade or whatever, it gets towed, and the only tow company we have to work with us that day, as dispatched by the 911 center apparently, is out of Hanover. It's your only car. So now you have to get to Hanover to get your car out of impound. That's a different onus to put on somebody than, say, a local tow yard. You know, Excalibur is just up by Weiss, you could walk there if you had to. If we increase that radius, we're really, I think, adding insult to injury in a situation that, you know, nobody wants to find themselves in. And if we're raising the, if we double the cost and we're moving it 20 miles away from your home...
Oh, I'm suggesting not doubling the cost. That's what I was, that's why I was suggesting go to a radius where we can get more tow companies involved.
I still think that's putting a lot on somebody who got towed.
Oh, of course it is. But we got to get the truck moved, the car moved.
I noticed that York City is at 120. I would guess they tow a lot more than we do, but that seems like a, I mean, that's less than we're currently charging, so...
We don't know how often they review their fees, too. They couldn't...
Right. How about we split the difference, 175-ish?
So I'm gonna, I'm trying to play devil's advocate on that, on here. So if we do go with what the, apparently now we're only down to two.
Yes.
Not three, but two tow truck companies in Gettysburg with a drop center in Gettysburg. We raise that up to 200, and what did he, what's he suggesting?
225.
225.
So they're either paying 225 to get their car back, or they're going to Uber to Hanover and get it for less. I'm suggesting try to make it. But if we want to, it's still, either way, my point is that either way, it's going to be a burden on them.
Sure.
Look at Chippensburg, no fee limit. They're relying on capitalism to kick in and the fee companies to compete for the business.
Well, but are they competing? It seems like what Belisha found out today from the chief is that the companies are in a rotation and they're dispatched by the 911 center. So competition doesn't...
No, but we have, we're not a limit-free area. We have limits in place. I'm just saying, in Chippensburg, that is their theory. They don't want to be bothered with officiating the fees.
Right, but I would assume that their toes are routed in the same way through a response center. So it's not that you get to shop around, it's whoever 911 center sends. So regardless of the fact that there's no limits, that you're still going to get charged, whatever, you don't have a say in who gets to, who responds to your tow need. The market isn't, you know, deciding there, it's just, you know, they don't want to get involved.
I'm good with splitting the difference. Would you say 175?
Then we'd only be increasing it $50 and not $100, which is what I objected to a few weeks ago. I'm okay with that.
And does anybody remember what their annual fee is, just to be able to tow in Gettysburg?
250.
And 250. So in two, in two, they're covering it with two pickups?
Yeah. Yeah.
And that's the non-crash?
That's non-crash. So that is defined here as the towing and removal of an immobilized or disabled vehicle or a motor vehicle parked in violation of any provision of any ordinance that the borough has authorized or requested by the borough concerning provisions of the ordinance. So that could be street cleaning, or not street cleaning, a snow emergency, it could be parade, funeral, parking in a reserved space that, you know, is destined for a bus, that sort of thing. And then, I'm sorry, what was the third one?
So 175 for non-crash?
Everybody okay with that?
Third one was crash.
Crash.
And then the issue there is, you know, there's glass all over the sidewalk or the roadway, rather.
Hazardous materials.
Hazardous materials. So, you know, it might take 45 minutes to an hour to move the vehicle, but you still have cleanup. And so that requires more time of the towing company.
So this one, the chief had also suggested doubling. We are currently at 175, and he had suggested 350. And he pointed out, and I think rightly so, this is also a situation where the owner's insurance is going to kick in. So we're talking about a vehicle that has to be towed from a site of a collision, it cannot be driven away. You guys, you may recall, in multiple meetings, he's made the distinction between a reportable crash and a non-reportable crash, and that's the difference is, reportable is where the vehicle cannot be driven away. So in that case, yes, there might be glass, there might be shards of metal that need cleaned up, they may be dealing with hazardous chemicals, gasoline, antifreeze, that sort of thing. And they are required to use their own cleaning agents and to not only remove the vehicle, but make sure that the intersection is passable. In that instance, I feel like the 350 might be warranted, and since insurance is going to be involved in that situation, I can understand why the haulers would be asking for a beefier consideration there.
And what was suggested?
350, up from 175.
That seems really high. When you look at York, York charges 120 for non-crash and 185 for crash vehicle removal, and maybe an additional 30 bucks for additional cleanup. So you're looking at between 65 and $95. So this proposed fee, I think, seems really pretty high, regardless of whether insurance picks it up or not.
I think they could be doing, you know, four times the work in a situation like that as well. So I think 300 or 350 makes sense to me.
And actually, the way it's stipulated here in our existing fee structure, it's $175 for the first hour and $125 for each additional hour of towing and removal services. So if it is taking them two hours to clean the intersection, they are being compensated under the current fee structure, too. They'd be getting as much, if they're there over an hour, they're getting 300.
So then what's being recommended is that the first hour go up to three?
Three fifty.
And then each consecutive hour is an additional, what, 150? How much is, how much more?
It's all up to you.
Right.
And cleaning up glass happens more rapidly than cleaning up the hazardous...
Yeah, that's time-consuming.
And different method of doing it.
Greater liability.
Greater, yeah.
And often, you know, the tow truck can arrive and may have to sit until the police tell them they can go. The police are investigating what happened, they may ask the tow truck driver not to immediately begin clearing the vehicle. Also, if there's EMTs involved, the truck may not be able to access the vehicles immediately. So time can start to add up pretty quickly.
I'm good keeping it 350. Plus the 125 for subsequent hours.
I was going to suggest 250 and 150. 250 for the first and 150 for each additional. But I'd be willing to do 300 and 100. Just think, I agree with Ms. Lawson, I think that first one is a little bit much, especially if you're going to get additional each hour. Hopefully, the people that are in the crash have insurance that will cover it.
All right. I heard 250 and 150, is that...
Going once, going twice.
Is that winner, 250 and 150?
That's not right. What's that?
250 and 150? Can we get a consensus on that?
250 for the first hour, 150 for subsequent hours?
Yes.
All right, I think we have a consensus there. Okay. Thank you for providing that area. No problem. All right. Any other statements on that? Any from anybody?
Well, just for our information, York County, it looks like they have a drop fee of 60. So I think our drop fee's reasonable.
Great. All right. That takes us to new business, the bus parking pilot program.
Yeah. So you have a draft ordinance in, not ordinance, draft resolution for you. Matt, do you want to talk about your vision on this, or you want me to take that?
Sure, I can do that. So unless you have spent the last year living under a rock on a glacier somewhere far away...
Or under a bus, maybe, no.
You are probably aware that we have a proliferation of buses downtown since the closure of Pickett's Buffet. And since, I would say, April of last year, Ms. Atiya has made her case that she believes bus parking permitting needs to be extended to large restaurants who are bringing in, frankly, an astounding number of buses. We have attempted one pilot program to deal with that parking issue, and it was, in my opinion, poorly executed and ineffective. So we were asked to pursue a second pilot program for this year to deal with what is going to be a pretty major traffic issue downtown this year. I've spoken with Mr. Bales here about this at length. We've often heard the number, 200 buses coming this year, and in my head, that sounded like 200 days of buses, but it's not. There are days where they will have student groups of 375 coming. So we're talking about eight or nine of those buses are all at once in one day. So Mr. Gable, Ms. Thistle, and I, and Mr. Carr have been brainstorming, how do we alleviate this situation? It's been suggested that we simply extend the same reservation privilege that other institutions, specifically theaters, tourist attractions, museums enjoy to restaurants. At one point, it was suggested we limit it to restaurants over a certain capacity. It was, one idea was to create a designated bus drop-off zone downtown, and that buses would still be compelled to move, find some other place to park while they're waiting for their groups to be loaded back in. Another common suggestion is stuff that's already on the books, which is that you can safely and legally drop, according to the chief of police and Title 75, the PAV vehicle code, you can safely and legally drop and unload a bus in traffic. We see this on the square all the time. We see it in the Wills quadrant of the square, we see it in the Hotel quadrant of the square. Those buses then move on to other locations. Over the last year, I personally have spoken to bus drivers for multiple events. Some have been mine, some have been visiting the train station museum next door to the Majestic. They don't frequently get to park at their location. Their experience tends to be, you drop people off, you go find someplace to park, you come back at a specified time, or when they call you, you load them back up and you go. So there are a lot of different approaches. So there are a lot of different approaches there. This pilot program here that we are proposing tonight, and this is a work product that the four people I mentioned have come up with, would just very simply do what is being asked by Ms. Atiya. We would be extending to certain types of businesses the ability to reserve, um, as many spaces as is necessary to accommodate large bus groups. So, um, that said, there are some stipulations, there are some principles that we have injected in here to try to come up with, um, what works best for everybody. Now, a lot of people have spoken in support of what's being asked here, other people have spoken against what's being asked here, and I will tell you, we have been, some of us on council have been approached by other business owners on York Street who have asked us specifically not to do this, because it negatively impacts their businesses and their ability to serve their customers' needs. We're trying to find the right balance here. It's hard, it's hard to find a balance that, so, that, um, meets the needs of customers for other smaller businesses while still safely unloading nine buses of children. One scenario that was suggested was that, you know, if we just had a drop-off zone on York Street, one of those nine buses could pull up, unload, drive away, the next bus comes in. I, I don't think that that's practical, because we deal with a lot of school groups at the Majestic. It takes five to ten minutes to unload a bus. Children are not great at complying, especially when they're on a field trip, they're having a great time, they're not following directions, it takes a while to get them off. So if we had nine buses coming at once, first one pulls into a drop-off zone, takes five to ten minutes to unload and leaves, and the second one then gets to pull in, we're talking about a line of nine buses blocking traffic for probably thirty-five minutes. Uh, the entire downtown shuts down while we're waiting to do this. They get inside, they eat buffet style, it takes maybe half an hour to feed them all, I don't know, and then you gotta do it all over again. You gotta get those buses back, line them up in the downtown corridor, and shut traffic down for another thirty-five minutes to get those buses reloaded. I don't think it's practical or practicable. So what we came up with here is to, um, a pilot program. And now, as you're all aware, the, the stipulation that allows a pilot program is we are testing something. We are seeing if something can work, and if there are problems that we couldn't foresee that arise. For example, if you reserved three parking spaces for a bus, but it was between two parked vehicles, could a bus get into that parking space? Some drivers will tell you yes, some drivers will tell you no. I talked to several coach drivers who said the last thing they wanna do, especially in a populated area with a lot of vehicle traffic, is put that thing in reverse to try to get into a parking space. They wanna pull in straight, they wanna leave straight. Putting it in reverse is crossing your fingers and hoping you don't hit a person or a thing. So, um, it's a pickle, right? So what we've proposed here, uh, is we would extend the use, um... Sorry, I'm trying to find my wording here. All right, uh, be resolved that the Borough Council would, um, implement the aforementioned bus parking pilot program to test whether this is possible or not. And designate the following streets for bus parking for a restaurant. Baltimore Street, uh, east and west sides from Lincoln Square to the Borough Limit, Steinware Avenue, the west side from Baltimore Street, between Baltimore Street and South Washington Street, Carlisle Street, east and west sides from Lincoln Square to Railroad Street, Chambersburg Street, north and south sides from Lincoln's, between Lincoln Square and Franklin Street, York Street, north and south sides between Lincoln Square and Stratton Street, Lincoln Square, all quadrants, all of Lincoln Square, West Lincoln, the south side, College Avenue, between College Avenue and Constitution. A daily permit would be purchased for each parking space used. The permit would include the date, time, location, and the reason. Payment for the buses in this pilot program would be paid at the following rates. Twenty-four dollars per meter on Lincoln Square, eighteen dollars per meter per day for the first block of York Street, the first block of Chambersburg, the first block of Carlisle, and the first block of Baltimore, twelve dollars per meter per day on the second block of Chambersburg Street. All permitted bus reservations are subject to the following provisions. Borough staff will place and remove all meter bags based on the date and time provided in the permit application. The bus is defined as a motor vehicle designed for the transport of a minimum of fifteen passengers, including the driver. No bus shall be parked idling for the Borough ordinance, and I, I personally would hope that the businesses, uh, pulling these permits would, uh, help us make sure that those engines are being shut, shut down, and that it doesn't become a compliance issue and an enforcement issue for the borough. No objects may be placed in the metered spaces or roadway that are bagged for a bus that's saying, "Don't put a folding chair there as you're waiting for the bus to come." Sidewalks adjacent to the parked buses must always maintain a five-foot-wide walkway to accommodate persons with disabilities and to allow sufficient space for pedestrians to pass by unimpeded. Borough issued permit, permitted special event or bona fide emergency will supersede any metered bag reservation request. So we're talking about Halloween parade or a snow emergency, anything to that effect. It's the responsibility of the business reserving the spaces to ensure compliance with the intended use of this pilot program. Vehicles not authorized in the narrow scope of this pilot program would be, uh, would be issued parking tickets, so that's saying this is, we would be reserving these spaces for the use of buses, these are not for personal vehicles or for errands. And that the reserved spaces are to be in close proximity of the business requesting bus parking reservation. The perm, that's saying that the permits would start at the meters directly in front of your business and then radiate out from there as necessary. That is the broad strokes. At this point, I need to open this up to discussion by my council peers.
I think you summarized it pretty well, and I, I, I will just, uh, reiterate that I think, I agree with you, that the first, the first pilot program wasn't a great, a great try. We did hear from public asking to do it again at a, at a more tourism busy time of year. I think we were, we, we may be accomplishing that with, with this specifically, because it's, um, March twenty-fifth through June twenty-second. We heard from public that, um, didn't want it, we heard from public that did want it, we heard from specific rest, uh, specific restaurant owner that really needs this. I, I love to see buses come downtown, I just want it safely done. And as I said before, we have to address this because the problem's not going away. I think that it is wise for us to do this, do another pilot program, learning from the first one. This is definitely more, in my opinion, more detailed and specific to get some data and try to remedy a situation that is not working currently.
Yep.
And certainly didn't work, um, in the first try. So I think that this is, I hope that this gets us, um, results that we need. It will certainly give public another opportunity to, um, give their feedback on during it, after it, it gives us data that we can look at as well, um, for consideration for future and what we're gonna do. And again, just like it is a pilot pro, just because it is a pilot program, if at any point we feel like, no, this is bad, it's not working, we can kill it.
Yeah, and I mean, there's, so the pilot lasts ninety days, at which point we have the option of extending it another ninety days if we like, and we can also tweak it at that point and make, um, corrections to it. So if we find that, you know, buses are not pull, fully pulling into spaces and like the backend is sticking into traffic, that's an issue we would need to address. If we find that, uh, neighboring businesses are issuing a lot of complaints about this usage, that's data we would have to collect and we would have to address. So this is not necessarily a silver bullet to the problem, but we do have a very busy season ahead of us, yes, and we need to get through it together. We might also find that next year, we don't see the same volume of buses, it could be a completely different landscape next year. Using the pilot here to, um, get through this year and to test, pardon me, what works and what doesn't, I think gets us closer to a resolution that's best for everybody.
I have one, one question to clarify for the public. This is, this one specifically is, is addressing that it is, um, where did it go? We're reviewing and consider the reservation, reservation of meters for buses at restaurants that have a seating capacity of more than fifty persons. So my question here to clarify for the public is, if it's another business that's already in, written in the ordinance that can reserve, that has nothing to do with this. This is a specific pilot program for buses for restaurants of fifty people or more, correct? Fifty seats or more, um, fifty persons, capacity of fifty persons or more. So others, other businesses such as museums, that's already included in the ordinance. That is not for the, they can go through the Borough Office with that existing ordinance to reserve their bags for that business.
Yep. Yeah, and I do wanna speak to, to Nancy, some of your comments, too. We, we all hear you, we understand that this has been a frustration, and, and, um, none of us is insensitive to it. So, but I do wanna speak to two of the points you, you've made. At the time the existing ordinance was written, we had a much smaller borough staff, we had a smaller police department, we had one person working in the parking department. We didn't always have, uh, the staffing levels we have today to handle administration of certain things. Uh, I've spoken with the chief about this, and he's in a complete agreement with me, that the administration of police actions and parking prohibitions are a police action. Cannot be self-administered by citizens and business owners. It was written that they could in the past because we didn't have as much of a staff as we do now. We, we, we need to be the ones putting the bags on and taking them off, it's just, it's inappropriate to let people administer their own police actions. Uh, and the other point, um, you had asked about more of a carte blanche approach to the permitting, you know, you're only gonna use it for two hours, why do I pay for the whole day? I know this is not a satisfactory answer, but it's, it's sort of mechanical at this point. The, the platform we use to administer our permitting, we really don't have the flexibility to create a wide variety of time, uh, options. We're gonna keep looking into it. It's not addressed in this pilot program, but we are going to keep looking into it. But at the time being, we don't have a solution for that, but you can still use the existing ordinance to reserve meters for the day. I, I know it's not ideal, but that's what we have right now. So I don't want you to think we're not paying attention, because we are.
And on that, sorry to talk again. And on that last second, uh, second, on that second comment there about the removal, I hope that we, as a council and staff, and perhaps working, uh, in close coordination with our police department, can figure out a way that we, even though it is paid for the whole day, if the event is done and the bus is gone, can we figure out a way that the powers that be that can go and get the bag? Are you done, you're done, great, remove the bag?
Yes, that's actually provided for in this.
Brilliant.
Yep.
Because otherwise, we're hurting business.
Yep, yep, no, we would, we would absolutely do that, yes.
I'm glad that restaurants are included, I think that, again, an equity issue here, so thank you to the working group that has worked on this. I'm curious how, um, in the second pilot program, how we're gonna collect the data and how that will be reported, so that we, as council, can look at that information that's collected, who's gonna collect it, how will it be administered, so that we really are able to give it a, you know, our best efforts in terms of evaluation here, if we...
Yeah, no, that's an excellent question, and, um, there, so there's two things there. So one, data will be usage, right, and we will have that based on the permitting. So we know, you know, that we are issuing X number of permits, we know that some of them are only being used for a portion of the day, some of them are being used the entire day, we'll, we'll be, we'll be collecting that data essentially in real time.
Okay.
But then the other data is what isn't working.
Right.
And that, like much of our enforcement, is going to be complaint-driven.
Okay.
You know, we're not gonna go out there and...
And it'll be anecdotal, too.
And measure, you know, is this bus sticking out into traffic six inches or not?
Right.
But if, you know, enforcement happens to be driving by, the police happen to be driving by, or even one of us happens to be driving by, and we see a bus sticking out into traffic, that's data we would be collecting.
And you're saying it's possible that sometime in the future, we can look at the platform that measures the parking rate or the parking length of time?
We're gonna keep looking into that, yeah.
To perhaps allow for multiple buses to be in the same spot in a day, instead of flat fee, rather than a daily fee? So partial hours for a bus that's gonna bring kids in?
So my understanding of this is that if you had multiple, if you had like one bus coming at the ten o'clock hour, and another one coming at noon, and another one coming at six, you could reserve that meter all day.
Gotcha.
And you could park multiple buses there throughout the day.
Gotcha.
What we're specifically looking for with the timing is more like, if I know that I'm done with my buses by one P M.,
Mm-hmm.
We want that specified in the application, so we know we can go pull those meter bags at one P M. However, at this point, we still only have the ability to charge for the full day.
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
But unfortunately, once that, you, that proper use of that bus is gone, that if we don't get out there and remove it, it sits there, empty, with a bag on it, that no one can park anything in.
Sure, that, that would be a problem, right.
And every other business as well.
Right, and we have, um, the parking department, and when they're not available, we have the police department to help us administer this.
How do we address the issue of, that you used earlier as an example, of nine buses coming in with, you know, three hundred kids? I mean, how does that, how does that work with this pilot?
Uh, it would work the exact way it does at the Majestic currently. Two days a year, we do have school groups come in, and we do reserve the meter from Carlisle Street. We will have up to eighteen buses at a time. We will reserve every meter on the first block of Carlisle Street, and we will put nine buses there, and we put the other nine at the fire hall. It's available for bus parking, uh, the, the fire department gladly accepts a, a donation for use of that lot, they just need to know it's happening ahead of time.
Where does the drop-off, though, occur for those buses that are going to the fire hall?
We actually walk them from the fire hall to the theater. The nine buses that park on Carlisle Street, they'll take every meter, and so every two meters is a bus from one end of the block to the other, and on the other side of the street, we employ, uh, a crossing guard through the college, uh, campus safety to get the students across the road safely, and then we have another guard working at the fire hall who crosses Stratton Street with them, and we bring them up the, the sidewalk along the railroad track.
Thank you.
So, I mean, potentially, the upper crust could be reserving every space on the first block of York Street one day for nine buses coming in.
And so that, that occurrence is, is one group, obviously? That's not the average?
Right. Yep.
And so it can vary, but the average is two?
Sure, sure.
The average is two, you said?
Two.
Okay, thanks.
We've tried to be thorough here, and we've tried to be respectful to everybody's needs. This is, Ms. Thistle, do you have anything to add to this? Are you pleased with the product here?
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I think you guys summarized everything very well.
Even as flush as with parking enforcement officers as we are now compared to the past, they're still stretched pretty thin, so...
They are.
They are.
We have to be respectful of their time and other duties as well.
And we do, that's why we're asking the time to be removed so that we can remove them at that time. We do the same for the Majestic. They pay for the day, but we do remove them when they say the buses are going to be done.
You said that'd be included on the permit?
Yeah, when you fill out the permit application, I need X number of spaces on this date and they will be in use between 11:00 and 1:00.
I believe the permit, it's like separate blocks. There's like three separate blocks. It asks time, daytime, location, and reason. And that is how we track it by that location. So, that is how we can get the data is from that location listed on that permit and how we know how to, where to bag as well. So, if you needed, you know, there's meter numbers on there, on each meter that you can list the meter numbers and that way we know exactly which ones you want.
Am I correct in that at the end of this pilot, not only will we examine the results of the whereas paragraphs, like the 50-person restaurants, but might we also look at the streets selected? And I'm pulling this out of the air, but let's say we suddenly thought Carlyle Street should only be the west side. We can modify that list as well.
Sure, sure.
And should modify that list as well.
And those locations were mainly picked because there are restaurants and things that tend, do have a seating capacity of more than 50. We didn't just pick streets, any other, just a street. Those did have restaurants on them.
Okay. Is everybody happy with what we're seeing here?
Yeah, and I think, again, the hard data numbers are going to come from, I would assume, come directly from the parking department. But the public comment in meetings, the public feedback in person, in email to us, I'm always asking and appreciative, you know? We won't always get along and agree on every little thing. That's human nature. But we can certainly listen to everyone's feedback and opinions and concerns. Hey, this really isn't working on my street and this is why. Hey, I really kind of liked it. Didn't really notice they were there that long and, you know, it was, didn't bother, didn't bother me as I thought it would. You know, sometimes people think it's going to be like this crazy thing and then it turns out it works very nicely.
Yep, yep.
Like open container. A lot of people thought it was going to be New Orleans. We never tried it, but I'm not bitter.
We got a lot of the sky installing.
It's fine. We tried, we didn't try it, it's all right.
Actually fine, that's all right.
But I don't think it would have become New Orleans.
I do keep logs on all of that, so if anybody does get any information, if they can pass it on, because I do have that, just like, whereas any other thing that we have, I have logs on it all so that it's all in one place together.
Thank you. All right.
So, just with respect to the rates, so if a bus is parked on Steinware on the west side between Baltimore and South Washington, what would be the rate for that bus?
It goes by the rate of the meter. So, the, that's $1.50 an hour there.
So, they're not going to be paying these, these flat rates that are specified later on in the rate schedule? Is that what you're saying? It would just go by the meter?
Yeah, it goes by the meter amount too. Like in the square, it's $2.00 an hour. So, that's why it's $24.00 for the day.
Right, I just didn't see Steinware listed here.
I think because we actually added that as a last, so Charles, I think, will have to add that to the, it'll be under the $18.
Okay, gotcha.
Amount. But that was one of the last streets we added because we realized there are restaurants on that street that seemed a little different.
Well, right, and the second block of Baltimore Street, which would be at the corner, I'm assuming. Second block of Baltimore, Breckenridge to the Fork is what I'm thinking as well. So, the first block is covered, the first block of Baltimore. And it says the Borough Limit, which goes out to, to the visitor center, right? That's where the sign is.
Yeah, the cemetery there.
Okay.
Because there are restaurants up there too.
Right, right. So, yeah, so the second and third block would fall under the $24.00?
No, the first block is 18. And then, anything after the first block on Baltimore is 12.
Okay, because it just says second block of Chambersburg. So, you're going to be adding Baltimore and Steinware to that?
Yes.
Okay, that's, that's all I needed to know, how much it's going to cost. Thank you.
Anybody else have a thought they need to share? If not, I'll move on, if that's okay? Thank you, everybody. All right. Mike Malawiki.
No.
Has been so patient, so patient.
Mr. Flavon.
Do you think you have trouble parking? Go ahead, Jess.
And I realize it's almost 9:00 o'clock, so I'll try to be as quick as possible with this. But it is an important topic. It's a serious, a serious problem that we have to deal with. Another one of those expensive projects where we have to count in millions of dollars. So, I think it is important that we do our due diligence here this evening. So, we're here to talk about the Stevens Run Channel Wall assessments. And as you mentioned, we do have the Chair of the Stormwater Authority, Mike Malawiki, with us tonight. John Lawver's with us as well from the Stormwater Authority. He's got a load of knowledge on the history of these walls. So, if I'm ever stumbling on something and you have a question about something, feel free to tag those gentlemen in. They can certainly help us through it here as we move forward. So, the first thing, and I have some images here of the Coon Alley wall collapse that happened a few years ago, just to show the importance of the topic here. But the first thing that we want to talk about is GBSWA's role. That's the Gettysburg Borough Stormwater Authority's role. Stormwater Authority kind of began a little over five years ago with two main goals in mind. The first one was the DEP permit requirement for the MS4 compliance. Luckily, we had the Culp's Run Stream project that was very successful. It brought us into compliance with everything we need for DEP. The good news, or the bad news there is that we were only somewhat successful with some grants on that project. So, it did kind of use up all of the funds for the Stormwater Authority for the first five years and we really didn't get into the aging infrastructure. But finally, we're now starting to go to that other goal, which is the aging infrastructure. And there's really two primary categories. When we talk about aging infrastructure, it's the metal piping that is all failing. Earlier tonight, we met at 6:30 tonight to talk about the Gettysburg Interloop and part of that project was one of those failing pipes that we have on Chambersburg Street. So, we know that that's an issue as well, but that's not what we're really here to talk about tonight. The other major issue in the borough is these channel walls. It's primarily on Stevens Run. There's some other channel walls, some other locations, but tonight, we're going to focus on the ones on Stevens Run. The other thing that is not the GBSWA's role is ownership. So, that was identified right from the get-go. Whenever the authority came into existence, that's one of the big differences between Stormwater Authority and Gettysburg Municipal Authority. Gettysburg Municipal Authority owns its sewer and water lines and this, and Stormwater Authority does not. It's kind of more of a funding mechanism for those projects. It's not to take ownership of those, of those infrastructure. And that's really the reason why I'm here presenting to you guys tonight and not just to the Stormwater Authority. So, as I mentioned, these pictures are of the Coon Alley wall collapse that happened in 2019. Luckily, on that project, there was clear ownership. It was right along an alley with Coon Alley. The borough has the ownership of that alley. There was no loss to any structures along there aside from our street. So, we were able to get an emergency response pretty quickly, deal with the wall that failed and rebuild it. That is not the ideal procedure. We're hoping that that is not going to be the norm, that we have to react to these things. We want to try to be, start being more proactive to these things. There is going to be places where if a wall fails, a structure, a house will, could fall in. And there is a real concern for who owns these walls, which is really the main goal of this discussion, is to make that determination. In this case, again, it was clear ownership that the borough owned it, so we were able to move swiftly. If we don't know who owns the wall and we do have a failure like this, it's going to be really hard to react. DEP's not going to know how to permit that type of a scenario. The last thing there is that the Stormwater Authority was aware of this issue in 2019 and we did an analysis, we've been working on it for about three years, where we've been measuring some walls here. The analysis shows the obvious, there's deterioration and significant impact to other structures.
So, we have three years of data on these walls. So, this is not something that we just looked at last year or six months ago. And the data is from CS8s. Okay? So, and you will talk about rotation of the wall and so forth?
Yes. Anything else about, about GBSWA's role in terms of financing projects versus ownership?
Well, just say a couple of things. The Coon Alley wall collapse was paid for out of the Stormwater Authority, okay? With, of course, the borough backing up. They did all of the labor. But, you know, going forward, we do not own these walls. You know, we're the operation arm for you folks when it comes to stormwater. That's all I'll say for now.
Yeah, and later, we're going to be talking about Bream Alley. It's the same thing. We've talked about Bream Alley here a few times and the Stormwater Authority is generating funds to pay for that Bream Alley project, although that's still the Borough Council's wall.
Can I ask a question? Mike, when you mentioned that Stormwater Authority doesn't own these walls, we're not able to determine whether the borough owns some of them or property owners own some or...
That's the discussion.
That's, that's where we are headed.
Perfect segue. Thank you, Ms. Dawson. There is the question that's on the overhead.
I will just add, someone will have to assume ownership.
Right.
It may be a mix and match.
But there's nothing in deeds, I mean, because we talked about that.
No, and Mr. Malawiki could speak to his deep dive in two minutes going back to, I think, the 20s and 30s, looking for information.
Right, and there's nothing.
There's nothing.
Well, no, there's a host of different things. The borough, just so you know, has made agreements with certain property owners in certain parts of Stevens Run that the borough repaired walls and has an agreement on their deed to say if these walls need to be maintained or fixed, it's not the property owner's responsibility. Now, there are other situations where, connect the legal counsel, and you look at deeds and the deed for a particular property will be to the middle of the stream. And that property has a wall that's failing, that's holding up, you know, right next to their building. So, it's all over the place really and...
And that's the most common real estate principle, is that you own, if you own adjacent to a body of water, your private ownership goes to the middle of that and many of the deeds call that out. But I think we only check, I think we check the number of properties, but a number would be like eight or 10 and there's so many properties. And almost every one of those, the call went to the middle of the stream, so it would be the private property owner who would own the wall, if you will, so...
And not to give you too much history, but there are minutes, borough minutes that I've read and I've copied and stuff, that a particular homeowner was told, approached the Borough Council and Sarah's smiling because she knows all these minutes that I read and eye strain on, but, and the property owner said, "I need to build a wall." And the Borough Council said, "Well, you have to build it to our specifications and we have to inspect it when it's done." And you can follow it over the months where the person approached, it was granted, he built it, and it was approved. And that was in the 30s, in the 20s. And then, the borough passed, I know in the 50s, an ordinance that said, "No one can build any walls without the borough's permission." And that's why I want to go to the sewer records of the committee where all the action was back then and to determine if people were building their own walls. And Chad knows that in certain places on Stevens Run, it certainly looks to me, I can't, that someone built their own walls, okay? And they're failing. So, enough of the history. Chad, I'll let you continue.
Yeah, and this is all, this is all...
Thank you.
This is all a perfect segue to the next slide. I mean, that's really what we're trying to leave here with. And by the way, this is a monster of a topic. I don't expect to have a kind of a unanimous decision here tonight. This is going to be something that we're going to have to probably take back and come back in another meeting. But, but the question up on the slide is who has or should have ownership of the walls, right? So, the first bullet there is, I think, what Mike's saying is, is that the research that was done is, I'm summing it as inconclusive. One of the discussions I had with the Stormwater Authority's solicitor was, we're actually surprised that there's not more documentation on who owns these very expensive walls that have such a concern for life safety, insurance of properties, those kind of things. So, the other question really at hand is not only who owns them, but who should have ownership? And so, whenever you're thinking about who should have ownership, you got to think of those bullets there that I have. For one, they're very expensive. We're looking at anywhere from $1,700 to $2,000 per linear foot to replace a wall. You know, so if you're looking at 100 feet of wall, you're looking at $200,000. There's properties where the wall could be more expensive than the property itself. The design and permitting of these things, this isn't something we would just want property owners to be going out there and doing on their own without the proper design, without the proper permitting through DEP. You have to have a PE license to be able to permit these things in today's world. It was way different in the 20s where there was a handshake and you got it done. Today, there's a lot of permitting goes into it. Shared wall over multiple properties, there's several places where you might have six, eight, 10 properties that have a similar wall, so you can't just replace 50 feet of that wall on that property. You have to kind of replace the entire wall and to try to get each property owner to contribute $50,000 or $100,000 towards a wall that costs $200,000 or $300,000 is going to be a logistical nightmare. Inaction has far-reaching impacts to neighboring properties and municipal facilities. That's obvious. If a wall fails, the stream's going to flood and then a lot of people are going to be affected by this.
Chad, can I just say one thing?
Yep.
Because this gentleman to my left is a, is a font of knowledge, but the borough has played a role in these walls over the years. And John, you know, can you just, just give him an example of how the borough has gone in and done certain work at certain times?
Well, back in the 70s, the borough got a lot of money from the federal government who referred to as Title III money. And they spent a fair amount of that money repairing Typer walls because they were in need of repair back then. And then, in the 80s and 90s, we kind of were 100% reactive. We did no preventive maintenance. We waited for it to collapse, fall, whatever, and then we went in and fixed it, period. We didn't ask any property owners, we didn't talk to them, we just went in and fixed it. And so, some of the people that have lived along Typer for a long time know that because the property hasn't been sold. But over time, if you look at the length of the Stevens Run or the Typer or Getty Run, depending what area you're talking about and what name it is, the properties change hands so many times that they assume that the borough owns that wall and the borough's going to maintain it. During my tenure with the Highway Department, we fixed a lot of footage. I mean, Mike and I joke because one of the contractors that I used whenever I could get him was a guy by the name of Leroy Angel, who was a very good concrete contractor in this town for years. And if you look at the sections of the wall he did, we don't have to worry about that. Walls will all be dead, buried, gone. The walls still be there. The problem is the walls are old stone walls primarily. Some of them are just handling, no mortar between them or anything else. And they're just packed with mud on the back and, and some of them are concrete walls where they didn't put dead men's, which is an anchor back into the ground. It's just a vertical wall. Now, the ground's pushing on it instead of a straight wall, it's leaning out. So, I mean, we have all kinds of problems. And in today's world, you just can't go in on somebody's property like we did for years and fix it because all of a sudden, you're in a lawsuit because they didn't want you there in the first place. And some of these walls where structures are sitting on them or ready to climb them... And some of these walls where structures are sitting on them or ready to find them, that'd be a real problem because not only don't we own the wall, we don't have any right-of-way behind the wall to go in to make repairs, we're not gonna be able to get equipment in. I mean, there's, there's a logistics to this that is unbelievable.
We have Stevens Run running under buildings.
These gentlemen are, I guess I'm gonna pay them for this presentation here, they're teeing me up for the next slide. The next slide is exactly what they just said, we have walls going under and through buildings. Here's the good news, those walls where these logistical nightmares are happening, they're in a little bit better shape. They're not the ones that we're talking about that are in imminent failure, like the Coon Alley wall that we saw that had collapsed in 2019. So, the first thing that I would like to do, and I ran this past the Stormwater Authority and they're kind of on board with me, is exclude those really complicated where we really don't know if we should own these things or not. So, you can see on the map here, there's nine of these locations, and I'm just gonna show them real quick, run through them here. The first, top left is, is the Federal Point Inn. There is a stream that goes underneath of that front yard of the Federal Point Inn. The Creekside Apartments is number two there, it goes, you can kind of see it here, the stream goes underneath of the Creekside Apartments through there. Number three is, there's a, a wall adjacent to the building, this is Washington Street here. Number four is, this is a stor, the storage garage, the wall is part of the storage garage. There's Gilley and Alley here and Coon Alley, this is where it failed, Coon Alley wall. But on that side of the wall that we're talking about is part of that storage garage, we're excluding that for now. Number five is, is the wall next to Gettysburg Vapes, which used to be the ugly mug. Six is, probably the most common one we talk about is, is Colonial Hall. There's, this channel runs underneath of Colonial Hall at this point right here. Number seven is between Strickhauser and Stratton. There's a, you can see there's a wall, they actually have their, their porch built onto it, like that, that house is part of the wall. Number eight is adjacent to Stratton, another wall, where the house is built right on the wall. And number nine, we're just excluding this, and this is, this is Fourth Street right here. This is like a timber wall right here. So, for now, we're just excluding that because we wanna categorize that with the exclusions. So, so that will help us. If we exclude those really, really complicated ones, then we can start focusing on the locations where it really matters. Oops, and I went through two slides here. This slide is just showing that we're trying to categorize these A, B, C, and D so that we can try to zoom in on where these, these things are because it's really such a monster of a topic. I'm kinda going fast here, feel free to stop me if you have a question about any of my slides. But the, so, so I'm gonna look at this backwards here, these two bullets. This bullet here tells you what PennDOT's requirements are. If it's between one and a half inches to four inches, then you have to start looking at these things every six months. And you have to start coming up with a plan of action. We have walls here with 12 inches of rotation, way more than the PennDOT requirement to where we have to take action. You can see by the plum bob on this picture over here, we drew a red line right over top of the plum bob. That's how far of rotation these walls are, they, they are in really bad shape. You can, you don't have to take my word for it, you can see it. I'm gonna continue on, this is the Bream Alley. So, I wanna stop on this one just for a second because on your, at your next council meeting, I'm gonna be asking for an agenda item to be put onto that meeting. I've already sent over the documentation to Mr. Eastman. It's either gonna be this next coming meeting or the following meeting. This is in advance of Gettysburg Municipal Authority's Sewer Interceptor Project, where we're gonna be teaming with them to replace this, this wall. There are sewer lines coming up Bream Alley right here. And in order to be able to get that sewer line in, this wall's gonna certainly fall in whenever that happens. So, we're teaming with them to replace this wall. The ownership of this side of the wall is very clear. It is in Bream Alley, the Borough owns it. The other side of that wall is not so clear.
You're talking about the block wall on the other side of the stream?
Yes, there's a concrete masonry unit wall, block wall, on the other side of Bream Alley.
Is that wall rotating?
That wall is rotating.
I thought so.
Yes, yes. That wall is rotating and it's undermining underneath of it. So, and that one concerns me because that's a pretty high wall, and if that falls in, it was, I don't know, Mike knows, the old wrestling coach, Mr. Togas, he used to live there, that's the house we're talking about there. But if that, if that wall falls in, there's some structures that are gonna come in with it. But the item on your agenda next month, so, so we own clearly this side of Bream Alley, we being the Borough. There is a piece right here where this wall is, the water's getting in behind the wall, and what we would like to do is, is round it off right here. That is gonna require us to go on a private property. To be able to do that, I already talked to this property owner, they're willing to give us a permanent right-of-way. That's the item that would be on your agenda, would be to approve the agreement for that right-of-way.
Which property is that?
It's this property right here. Ms. Hazel is the owner of this property. It faces Middle, uh, Middle Street.
West Middle.
Bream Alley and West Middle Street, and this is the back of the property here. So, this is the shopping complex here, like where Tanya's restaurant.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. It's right behind that. You can see it here, here's the shopping complex.
I'm sorry, there on that map, can you point to the exact spot you're putting?
So, this, this little square right here is right here.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Yep, this is Mrs. Hazel's property. So, the wall that's along the alley clearly is falling, like this is what the wall looks like, it's falling in. And it's not gonna survive the sewer project. It's the rounded part right here where it starts to go down near Wolf Alley, this rounded part right here, that's the piece that's gonna go on to private property. So, we're already recommending to you guys to go ahead and take ownership of that, and it's just kind of a, an outlier for the rest of this. And I, and, and in my opinion, it's very clear and different, the ownership of this little piece. And decision on taking ownership of that piece would not set a precedence on the rest of it, you know, whether you would wanna take ownership or not. Next location here, we're along Coon Alley. So, this is the wall that failed in 2019. The rest of this piece right here is actually one of the areas that are in better shape. It's one of the areas where we would consider maybe some maintenance. So, you can see a more typical section, less severe deterioration, there's mortar that's missing. So, we could go through here, put some weeples in, fix the mortar, and maybe save some of that wall instead of doing the really expensive fixes. Here is a section along the Gilley and Alley and Carlisle Street. This is the City Mart here, Late Night Bites, this was, this is Gettysburg Vapes and the old ugly mug. This wall in between is in really bad shape. It's bulging around eight, eight inches, this is a reminder, one and a half inches to four inches is, is really bad. And this is twice as bad as really bad. The, part of the issue with this one is, this is the backside, so, so Late Night Bites was this little building right here, if you guys can remember that, that little building. This is the backside of that. That's one of those outliers where, again, you get to the logistics of trying to replace that wall, that building's gonna become an issue. Moving down further, I'm going west to east here, kind of, if you haven't, if you noticed how I'm following along. We have multiple landowners in this section, so you can see one, two, three, four, five, six properties with the same wall. So, you shouldn't really be replacing one of these walls, you should be replacing the entire stretch at the same time, there's logistics issues. There's severe deterioration on this, on this section. Here you have Water Street, and again, this is one of our, our primary concerns. This wall here is, is rotating nine inches. You can see how out of level it is. We feel that this, this wall, of course, I don't have a crystal ball, so I can't guarantee when this is gonna happen, but it's gonna be sooner than later. The last, so, so, yeah, this is an important piece right here. In the last two years, it's rotated an inch per year.
We're not sure who built that wall.
Right, that was not the contractor John was talking about earlier. And this is the last little piece, this is just categorized for the rest of them. If, if you were gonna take ownership of the rest of them, you'd also take ownership of this one, but this is a low priority, it's down here at the end, this is actually dry stacked stone, there's no mortar in it. I wouldn't recommend doing anything with this at this point, it's just we have to include it with, with the rest of them. So, cost estimate, here's probably what you wanna know, right? And, and if we had to guess at the cost at this time, we're looking at five to eight million dollars to, to replace these walls. Of course, that's, there's a lot of different factors that can go into play. Can we maintain some of them instead of full replacement? That's obviously cheaper. But this is based on, on Bream Alley, we have estimates. This summer, as I said earlier, we're gonna be bidding that project, so we'll have an actual cost of Bream Alley, and we'll be able to update some of these numbers at that time. But this, this cost estimate is assuming these type of, of solutions. This is the Susan Noggle Bridge here that was with the Gettysburg Interloop Phase A project. This is what it used to look like and enduring construction, this is these, these gravity wall systems. When John talked about the, the dead men they put behind the walls, a lot of places we don't have room for that, like he said, there's logistics don't work. These gravity walls work great for those reasons, these things are 2,000 pounds each, they had to put them in by crane, it's not your hand-laid blocks. So, you bring in these, these huge walls, and they're called gravity walls because they're so heavy that they hold themselves in place, and they don't need the tiebacks where you would have structures. So, this is the kind of, of wall that we're suggesting happen throughout the Borough. Again, over here, this is the Coon Alley Bridge that we talked about that failed. Here's the Borough crew going to, to work along with, was that Strabane, Robbie, or Cumberland's? Cumberland's? Robert Tire?
We had, we had all three of them with us. I mean, we did it through the agility department.
Through the agility. But these are, actually, that wall is a little bit different than this wall, they're two different manufacturers that have a similar thing, but there was the end product there, so you can kinda see that. Next step, so, the way that I see this is that you kinda have one of two options here. Either the Borough's gonna take or accept ownership, or you're not going to, and you're gonna require the property owners to it. If you wanna take ownership, the steps, I, I've kind of outlined the steps there that you would have to take. First thing I would suggest is you develop a written policy. You exclude those areas that I'm talking about where you have a structure for now in that written policy. Maybe that written policy has a map, this map that I've showed you earlier, that these locations, we are gonna suggest that we're gonna start taking ownership of. Then if, once you have a written policy, you vote on it, and that's the Borough wants to do, then you have to start acquiring easements. I'm, now I'll come back to the budgeting. You have to get easements, you have to actually have the ownership before we can start doing any work on those, those locations. Then, of course, you gotta go through the Design and Permitting Project, and you budget for these things. I'm just gonna stop on that for a second 'cause, 'cause we did actually, Charles had, advised you earlier in a different meeting that we had talked to Penn Vest and a couple other ways to fund this thing. And Penn Vest won't even provide funds for these kind of things until you have clear ownership. If we try to get grants for these things, we can't get grants for them until we have clear ownership. We applied for an H2O grant, as you know, last year, we were denied that, but we only applied for that in those areas where we have clear ownership, like along Coon Alley and along Bream Alley. We could not apply for a grant for any of the rest of this. So, until we have the ownership, we can't apply for grants. And then, of course, the bidding and construction. Now, this one, I don't have as clear of a path, like those, those steps that I, that I have for if you take ownership, I think are fairly straightforward. Number two, these, I'm not, I'm not sure about this, this path, you know? I, I would think that you would have a, a written policy that says that we are not gonna own these walls. But at that point, then you have to start governing the replacement of these walls. I think failure to do anything is not a good idea, because these things are gonna start failing and then we're gonna have to react, and that's gonna be an issue. So, you're gonna have to go to the property owners and say, "Hey, you own this wall, you need to replace it." And I'm not sure how that's gonna work with, with these things costing hundreds of thousands of dollars. They may need to have some type of a funding mechanism, is the last bullet there. But again, that path is not very clear to me. If that's the option that the Borough wants to take, we're gonna have to have a lot more discussion on how to govern replacements of the walls. That is it for the presentation. Mike, did I miss anything there, and you, can you think of?
I think this group may wanna go back to bus parking. Or maybe not. But this is a huge, a huge ticket item. I, I can't speak for everybody on the Authority, but I would say that we would lean towards trying a, an approach that, that makes sense, and what I'm trying to say is, if we can save walls, and I mean save them for 30 or 40 years, then I think we would wanna do that. But what you're seeing here, that's the exception rather than the rule. You know, the rule is, we have far more walls that are failing than ones that we could save.
Yes, and Mike, the first set of slides showing the sections that went under buildings reminded me of our 100-year flood in, what, 98, 2000? And it washed away buildings that, some of them that were shown on those slides, the Silk Mill Apartments, just washed away. So, we need to start hoping that we don't have another 100-year flood anytime soon.
I just remembered one thing that, that I failed to mention, whenever I talk about exclusions, we're not, so we kinda have two main streams that go through the Borough. We talk about Stevens Run, which, which John and Mike reminded you guys, it also sometimes dubbed the Tiber or Getty's Run.
It was originally called Getty's Run.
They're talking about the same thing. When you hear the word Tiber, Stevens Run, or Getty's, it's all the same thing. There is another stream that goes through the Borough, that's Culp's Run, it's also known as the Weinbrenner Run, old Mr. Gee's Ice Cream, used to be the Weinbrenner Farm, and that's what we call that. We are excluding that from this analysis right now, that five to seven million doesn't include that. The Fawn's Worth has a, a wall that I talked to you guys about. There's a piece that goes under our Welcome Center, we're gonna call that the Weinbrenner Culvert, that's getting, getting handled with the Baltimore Street Project. There's a piece that goes under the Gettysburg Middle School, there's a pipe there. Again, we're excluding those things for now, then we have a different, clearer path with those. This is the one, Stevens Run's really where we needed to focus our attention first on.
And they are two separate?
Right, two separate.
Yep, they completely connect to, to Rock Creek at different locations, so they're completely separate from each other.
Right.
But you showed in some of the photographs, the, the things that was down, I mean, were the buildings that are actually part walls, I mean, were the foundation of the building. I mean, can you talk a little more about that in terms of, I mean, what happens to that building if you're the property owner there? I mean, that's like...
Nothing good. Yeah, yeah, it's not good, right? Right? It'd be the obvious, right? Like I said earlier, the, the good news there is, and the reason why we're excluding those, is most of the times whenever a wall was created as a foundation to a building, it had a little bit more science behind it. It had some design, it had some more TLC when it was built. So, those aren't as, they aren't deteriorating to the same conditions as these.
Rapid, very rapid.
These 1,800 rock walls that were hand-laid. So, that's the good news. Now, if those would fail, there's obviously bigger implications there. I mean, there's, there's certainly significant safety concerns.
Chad, most likely, those are gonna be privately owned.
That, that's what we're anticipating. A lot of, a lot of those cases, we wouldn't wanna take ownership of those for a, for a lot of obvious reasons. That's why we're just excluding those for now, focusing on the ones that we need to focus on because they're, they're failing.
Right. Some, some of the walls look to be almost like, I mean, they were just, you know, like you can see where the line is, and it's, you know, like right angles. I mean, it's just, there's nothing in there, right? It's just...
That's, that's it.
Unbelievable, okay.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Claybaugh?
Chad, just...
Thank you both for joining us.
Thank you.
I just wanted to ask, do those numbers also take into mind property right acquisition? I mean, in other words, is it more, is it?
No, right? No. Not, you know, and, and it's funny, because we talked about that, and...
Not that funny, but...
And we were, and, and so, if I was a property owner and municipality was, came to me and said, "Hey, I'll take this off." We don't know if you, if you have the ownership or if we do, if you have the ownership, it's gonna cost you $200,000 to replace this, we'll take the ownership if you give us the easement for a dollar. I would be willing to give the easement for a dollar. I feel like that's gonna be the case here in a lot of these, these cases.
Have we got a darn thing like the, a constitution involved where it says when the government...
That's the issue.
Takes ownership, you've gotta pay just compensation.
Yes, and I, and I, and...
And trust me, they, they might have a higher figure than we're just giving it away.
Yeah, and, and so, and this is a real, this is a real concern what, what Harry's talking about, because on the Steinware Phase One project, I kinda got my, my fingers smacked. because when the Steinware Phase One project, I kind of got my fingers smacked, 100% of the property owners, they wanted that brick sidewalk. So everyone gave the easement and didn't get, collect any money for those easements for that construction. And PennDOT said that shouldn't have happened. You should have paid them for those easements. So that is, that is a concern that would have to get factored into it, is acquisition of those right of ways, for sure.
Do those easements have to be market? Base easements?
Yep. Fair market values is equals just compensation.
Everybody wants a brick sidewalk till they have to shovel it.
So I believe that's it for tonight, but I would like you to start thinking about the next steps because we do need to take action on some of these things.
Right.
So I don't want to just stall on this and forget about it and push it to the back burner. I'd like to keep it on the front burner so that, you know, if you guys come to a revelation or a unanimous decision on this, you say, okay, here's how we want to decide on this. We would like that feedback. The Stormwater Authority would like that feedback as soon as possible.
So it sounds like what's needed from us in the short term is going to be those two written policies on where the borough does take ownership and where the ownership is considered to be private.
Or for now, you could just pick one of those, one of those policies. You could just say, on these sections, we agree to take ownership and be silent about getting the rest of them.
And did you think, I mean, one of the concepts could also be, I mean, the written policy, if you will, could end up being in the form of an ordinance in terms of maintenance and, you know, I mean, kind of the requirements that we've had, apparently, that have been in place, you know, that you've got to come to the borough to get a permit, there has to be inspections, that sort of thing probably makes sense.
Would that be a standalone ordinance or in addition to the stormwater ordinance?
It'd probably stand alone, but.
Well, as I mentioned, there is a 1952 ordinance about building new walls. Has to come to.
And it's very specifically for new walls with, you know.
Right, but for example, at the college, there are no walls. So I would presume that that would be exempt if indeed you wanted to parcel the ordinance like that, right?
Yeah.
And also by the rec park, there are no walls. There's a concrete ace, right? Parso.
Parso. Yeah. And John, were we in the 1970s, were we operating under that ordinance? Was that kind of controlling things or?
You ask John Glover a question, you get a straight answer.
The road we fixed.
Right.
We didn't ask anybody, including DEP, and I got my fingers more than slapped for that.
If we take, if we take ownership of it, is it then an asset as, we never considered borrowing against a wall, but is that on the books as an asset for the borough?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Since it's such a big ticket. Okay. Just like our roads that would be a sign of value and it would probably depreciate over time.
Would it also remove square footage from taxable parcels, though?